All right.
So I'll start off opening the planning board meeting.
Sure.
And on the meeting to order, we do have a quorum. And to start off with, regular statement that we hit record or?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. But this meeting is being recorded, and if anyone else is recording, please notify the chairs at this time. Okay, thank you very much. And just want to do a roll call of the planning board members. I'll mention that Peter had interfered earlier today and be unable to attend. So I'll start with the planning board. I'm George Palomos on the chair.
My name is Sarah Brown Anson. I'm a planning board member.
Jeff Salzer, vice chair.
And Victor.
Michelle Clark.
Thank you.
Michelle Clark.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the EDC.
So this is the Economic Development and Planning Board Joint Hearing on Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And we're going to open this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by the planning board. Again, I have to say this, if any other persons present are doing the same, you must know by the chair, said that. So then we're going to do a roll call of members. So I'm Counselor Healy, present. Counselor Garrett.
I am present.
Counselor Gordon.
I think I saw her. You did say she's going to log in remotely. But we can no longer see everybody who's there. Okay, hold on a second.
Sharing screen.
David Singer, it says.
Is that intentional?
I'm not sure. I'm kind of doubting it because this looks like it's like iTunes or something. This is email.
David, are you trying to share the screen right now?
Can we stop him?
Am I mute? Maybe I'm not on mute. Am I mute? Am I? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm befuddled.
Okay.
I don't get from where I am to where I was.
So we need to kick him up, share, share my screen.
I will buy Rachel maybe some time to log in.
I just want to be in generally.
I think that's a reasonable way to feel.
Um, you, you should have a menu at the top of your screen that'll, that says your screen sharing and there should be like a end stop screen sharing option. Do you see that?
Well, I can't get my name to get any bigger than a postage stamp. So how would I do that? My screen is small.
Are you using a dual monitor?
I can go out and come back in. How about that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
See.
Yep. So we're still waiting on that.
Maybe I can't do that.
Nope.
Oh, here we go. Okay, you are screen sharing. So what do I, so I?
End screen sharing.
Yes.
And.
This looks like my real best sound.
Wow, what if that's?
Which I said, I guess there's more about me that I maybe need to reveal, but.
You can make the icons even smaller if you need more space.
So you're also.
There we go. Perfect. All right, do we have Counselor Gordon yet?
Don't see her.
Because we won't have a quorum.
Right. And so what does that end up meaning? Oh, she's having trouble logging into Zoom. She'll be there ASAP, and that was a minute ago.
Okay.
So she just sent that to me.
We can't have the public hearing until.
Okay, so we can't.
Get our third. Yep.
As we're waiting, we could, on the planning board, put the minutes for August 1st.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I, so I, but I wasn't able to make that meeting. Of course, I sent a letter. I don't know if that was incorporated in the meeting or not. I didn't see it in the minutes. If it wasn't, then it's okay. Didn't have to fill in that.
Okay.
I, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
August 1st?
For August 1st, 24.
Thank you. Discussing.
Um, so I just.
Seconded. Who seconded?
Jeff.
Thank you. I'm trying to keep minutes.
Appreciate that from, from afar.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, on page.
I have no discussion on the minutes.
Page two, yeah.
Yeah. So on, on page two, section B. I don't know if it was necessary to say that there is disagreement between revising the number to 10% versus 50%. I know the 50% number wasn't mentioned in the minutes. I don't know how detailed we need to be about that.
Whether we need to have, that there was discussion about that?
Yeah, because right now it says just that Victor suggested revise number to 10%.
Yeah.
Um, but we could add that you, George, suggested 50%. And then later on in the discussion section, no, that is the discussion in the action items. It says the board reached consensus about 10% of that. So, um, without mentioning what the alternative was. I don't know if I'm being too detailed.
Well, it, it, it doesn't need to be comprehensive. If you felt it was significant enough, you could propose adding that, that the alternative option was 10, was 50%.
Okay. Since we discussed it for more than one minute, I would say.
Okay, so just tack on to the end of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Uh, also considered was the option of 50%.
Yeah.
Got that, Victor? You're muted.
Yes, I got it. I got it.
Thank you. And was that it for you, sir?
That was the only change.
Okay, I had one other thought, page three. About a third of the way down, we start off, Palomos responded, and this is about the special permit versus by right site plan. And if this was, the comments captured were about the ability of the public to participate. And since for a special, for a site plan review at the chair's discretion, people could participate. Another significant point I made, and I wanted to just add a sentence at the end of that. Palomos also noted that with a special permit, a butters are notified about a proposal which doesn't occur if the project is by right. It was both about hearing about it and about being heard about it, so. You all set with that, Victor?
Yes, I am.
Great. Thank you. Any other? Jeff, did you have any comment? Um, all right, uh, all board members, planning board members in favor with those two changes?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Great, thank you. And as we go back to the public hearing, are we required to read this?
Oh, yeah, I'll read it. Yep.
Very good.
Um, but finish, to finish roll call, Rachel, can you hear us now? Counselor Gordon?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
And you're present? Perfect. So we do have a quorum now. So with that being said, um, the public hearing in accordance to a Home Rule Charter, the Economic Development Committee of the City Council and the Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the City Hall Meeting Room, second floor, 14 Court Square, and via Zoom. Um, meeting ID 99590081278 to consider the proposed zoning amendments to section 200-39, Open Space Cluster Development of the Zoning Ordinance. The proposed zoning amendments can be found at greenfieldmas.gov, Departments Planning and Development Current Projects PHP. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, at 6:30 at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and via Zoom. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Square, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or the Department of Planning and Development by phone, 413-772-1549, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Respectfully submitted, Marian Bullock, EDC Chairperson, George Salunas, Planning Board Chairperson. And at this time, 6:09 on September 5th, I'd like to open the public meeting. So we do have a few people signed up for public comments, so.
I could, uh, have to do, one thing I wanted to suggest is I know that we have Allison Gage here, who has worked with the, um, the planning board for two years.
Yep.
Uh, as a consultant on this, and what I thought might be helpful, and we talked with, Erica talked with Allison about, is for her to give an overview of this, because that may help the public be more informed in their.
For comment? Yeah, I would agree with that. So we're going to open it up to Allison Gage.
Yeah, I, I did prepare like a 15, 20 minute presentation. Is that okay? Is that?
Absolutely. It's actually wonderful.
All right, great.
You're up.
I am just trying to share my screen.
Be more helpful.
Uh, boy. All right, that'll go all right. Is that up there?
Nope, yeah.
Okay. Okay, sorry. It's like a little laggy, but, um, we'll see how it goes. All right. Well, thank you all for having me. I'm Allison Gage. I'm a Senior Land Use and Natural Resources Planner at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. And as George mentioned, I've been working with the planning board for the past two years to make some updates to the Open Space Cluster Development Ordinance. And I'm looking forward to sharing our work with you all tonight. Um, so the work that we're doing is a part of a larger watershed scale zoning project that the FERCOG has also been working on with the towns of Shelburne, Bernerston, and Conway. So I'll share a bit of background on that project and then provide an overview of how the board determined to work on the open space ordinance and then provide a summary of the proposed changes. So the grant that the FERCOG has, as I mentioned, is a watershed scale zoning project funded by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. With funds from the grant, we're working with several towns throughout the Deerfield River watershed to align land use regulations to better protect water quality by reducing pollutant loadings from new development and redevelopment projects. We chose to plan at the watershed's watershed scale because of how land use regulations in one town can posit it, can positively or negatively impact water quality in neighboring towns within the same watershed. So if we take the Green River watershed, for example, all of the land uses upstream in Vermont can impact Greenfield's water supply because all of the water within the watershed is flowing to the same point. Stormwater runoff from excessively wide roads or large parking lots, sprawling large lot subdivisions upstream in the watershed can result in increased temperatures and pollutant loadings, erosion and sedimentation, and loss of groundwater recharge downstream. The extreme rainfall events and droughts due to climate change are only worsening the problems, resulting in increased stress on water bodies. When towns within a watershed regulate development in a consistent manner, the benefits can extend beyond the boundaries of each community and across the shared watershed. If towns work together to limit impacts from new development and redevelopment, the positive impacts will be seen on the watershed scale. We'll likely see improved water quality, less flooding and damage from erosion, and overall be better adapted to our changing climate. A couple of years ago, as a part of another project, the watershed-based plan to maintain the health and improve the resiliency of the Deerfield watershed, FERCOG staff put together a scorecard of zoning regulations that address water quality impacts and then ranked them as either fully addressed, partially addressed, or minimally addressed in zoning. This scorecard was the jumping point for our project, and we used it to brainstorm areas where we could make potential improvements to Greenfield zoning ordinance. Um, a full two years ago, I met with the planning board and went over some possibilities for making improvements that would benefit the Deerfield River watershed as a whole. We went over general options for updating the cluster development, um, conducting a mapping analysis to find opportunities that would allow for infill redevelopment or adaptive reuse, and strategies to preserve and protect agricultural land. Ultimately, the board decided to move forward with updating the Open Space Cluster Development Ordinance because that would provide more opportunities to have an influence on stormwater management. Um, before I jump into the details of the, um, Open Space Ordinance, I wanted to provide a quick visual on what this really means. Um, so open space development seeks to move away from building homes on large lots that take up a lot of resources, puts homes closer together, and then permanently protects the rest of the land. Although the land is protected, there are often community features such as walking or hiking trails. Um, and other benefits of cluster developments include reduced cost to developers because less infrastructure is required and it's cheaper to maintain. Um, and then, of course, there's also water quality benefits because there's less impervious surfaces. So the diagrams here, um, on the left is an example of a traditional subdivision, and on the right is an example of, um, a cluster subdivision. At present, Greenfield zoning ordinance allows cluster developments in all residential zoning districts with an open space protection requirement of 25%. Multifamily homes are allowed, but they can't exceed more than 30% of the total number of dwelling units. And in order to cluster the homes, the developer can shrink the lot sizes, um, down to the minimum lot requirement of the downtown area or the urban residential zoning district, which is 8,000 square feet. That's down from 40,000 square feet, um, in the rural residential area or the RC zone. So that's the lightest, uh, zoning district on this map. Um, so that decrease is pretty significant. Although you can shrink the lot sizes down, um, to the herb, to the size, the minimum size lot in the urban residential zoning district, the current ordinance does not allow for an increase in density. So even if you use the cluster development, you'd only be able to build the same number of lots under a typical subdivision. Um, but you could decrease the lot size so as to create a cluster and conserve the land. So that point will be relevant in a couple of minutes. I just wanted to make that clear. Um, so now I'm going to provide a summary of the four primary proposed changes to the ordinance. We made some minor tweaks to the language, um, here and there for the sake of consistency, but, um, I'm just going to provide a summary of the substantial changes. So the, the first that we're proposing, um, is increasing the amount of required protected open space in the most rural residential zoning district from 25% to 50%. We looked at similar zoning regulations from other towns in Franklin County and found that Greenfield's requirement was a little low. Um, in reviewing Greenfield's ordinance, we also compared it to Mass Audubon's Bylaw Review Toolkit for promoting low-impact development. They actually, um, suggest requiring 50% of the parcel to be conserved at a minimum, and their actual best practice is upwards of 75%, but looking at the land that could be subdivided in Greenfield, we determined 50% would be a good balance of, um, allowing for building more housing while protecting forestlands and critical habitat. Um, our second proposed change is to the calculation for the minimum, for the, sorry, maximum initial number of dwelling units so as to not, uh, penalize developers for the features of the parcel. This is, um, a little confusing to explain, but I'm going to do my best just so we can conceptually think about it. But what it means is that if you were trying to subdivide a parcel that was somewhat hilly on one side and had some wetlands, although you're not going to be able to build on that land due to the topography and the wetlands and the natural features of the site, we're now only going to reduce 10% of that amount of land from the net acreage calculation. So that way you can be allocated more units upfront. Um, the net acreage is what the developer would base the number of units off of because that's what they would divide, um, by the minimum lot size. So it's just allowing for a little bit more density upfront. Um, and I'm happy to try and answer questions about that at the end. And then three, I'd say this is the biggest change to the ordinance. We developed a bonus density system to further incentivize the building of more units with features that will benefit the community. Um, we based some of the criteria off of what neighboring towns are offering. And the idea here is that if a developer includes a certain criteria such, such as protecting extra open space above the required minimum, they would be awarded with a number of extra units they can build on the parcel. So this increase in density will be possible because of how the developer can shrink lot sizes down when building under this ordinance. To simplify things, we went with a percent density increase instead of a point system. So this is probably, uh, hard to read, but just for the sake of a couple of examples, if a developer chose to allocate more than 30% of their buildable lots to two-family, three-family, or multifamily homes, um, then that would give them a 10% bonus. Or if they chose to install solar PV on all roofs, that would be another 10%. Or if the design included public recreational activity, uh, such as walking trails, that would give them a 5% bonus. Some communities set a limit on how much of a density bonus you can receive, but we chose not to and instead thought that water and water sewer infrastructure should be the natural limit. Um, and then the last change we made is to the subdivision regulations. The section we added is a conservation analysis and finding section so that the planning board and Conservation Commission have an opportunity to work with the developer to identify areas of the parcel that may be more important to the city to conserve, um, and where development would best be cited. We did discuss that this could, um, maybe put a strain on the planning board. So, and Conservation Commission, um, but we, we did some mapping and determined that, um, just based on the number of lots that are left to subdivide, this, this probably wouldn't come up too often, and it, and it's a reasonable exercise um, to make sure that the city has a say in what land is protected and where development is located.
Is that something she can adjust?
I think Allison, did your mic go quiet? Um, your volume dropped by like 50%.
Yeah.
And our TV's at max.
Oh, um, hmm. Wait. Is this any better?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, did you miss, um, what I said on the last slide?
Uh, we heard it, but I don't think the folks in the back of the room heard it. So if you could repeat it, that'd be great.
Okay. Um, so what I was saying is that for the, um, the last change we made is that we added a conservation analysis and finding section to the subdivision regulations. So that's a process in which, um, the planning board and Conservation Commission would work with the developer to determine, uh, which area the parcel should be conserved or and where development should be cited. And we did have some conversations about, um, how much of an extra workload that would create for the planning board and Conservation Commission, but based on some mapping we did, we thought that because of the number of lots that are left to reasonably subdivide and how many subdivision applications have come forth, um, that it would, it would be worth the amount of extra work for the city to have a say in, um, what land is conserved and where development would be cited.
Thank you.
Um, and so those are the four primary changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions on what I presented, um, or if we want to move into the public comment.
Allison, I just wanted to, uh, in reviewing the materials, going back to, um, a couple of years ago, uh, I wonder if you could comment on the GIS analysis? And, uh, in the document here, you identified how many privately owned parcels in Greenfield there are that is applied to the percentage of land in the residential zone. How old are that? Is that your fingertips?
Um, it is not. Am I think, would it be helpful to pull that up?
Well, I, I can read from what you sent and just to make sure that's accurate, but, um, you wrote that, uh, there were 115 privately owned parcels in Greenfield, total of, uh, almost 2,000 acres, 14% of the land in the city, currently undeveloped in the residential zones and could be subdivided following the open space, uh, cluster development ordinance.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, that was a result of the mapping exercise that I did. Um, basically looking at, I think, parcels larger than five acres.
Yep.
Don't have any development, just to see where this could reasonably apply to.
Thanks. I just, I know that was part of our discussion about how wide we could this be applied potentially. So, thanks.
All right. Um, and before we go to the public, if you guys could share that presentation with the full council, that would be beneficial for you for our next meeting.
The, what I just quoted from.
Oh, Allison showed us.
I'd love to see this map if it's available, because that would be super helpful to visualize the impact of this, you know, being aware of which parcels we're talking about specifically.
Yeah, but I think before we go on discussion, I like to get the public's comments, um, and then we could go into a quick, open discussion before we close. Um, so the first on the public comment list is Mitchell Spade. And just remember to save your address as well.
Sure.
Give me an address.
Mitch Spade, to Chestnut Hill. Uh, I'd like to, uh, make the following brief comments about open space cluster development proposed by law. One, I note that the perp, one of the purposes of the open space by law is to encourage the permanent preservation of open space. Two, it seems contradictory for the city to be pushing new open space development regulations while at the same time crowding our side and backyards with accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Three, in section 200-39 F1 of the open space by law, it talks about lot size and says how many units can be put on a parcel is based on net acreage of the parcel. We should use the same parcel size principle when determining whether a parcel is qualified for an accessory dwelling unit or not. Four, section H1 of the open space by law is called dimensional requirements. And it states, the area of the tract to be developed shall not be less than five contiguous acres. We should use the same principle and apply it to accessory dwelling units. Residential parcels less than a certain size should not be eligible for ADUs because of the limited open space on such lots. Five, lots of less than a half acre might be an appropriate dimensional limit for parcels to be considered for ADUs. Uh, I hope the planning board will remember we need to encourage the preservation of open space on lots that may have large homes on them in small yards. It does not help property values to have an ADU squeezed on a small lot with a large principal dwelling and little open space left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, Joe Marie Jackson.
Uh, Joe Marie Jackson, to Chestnut Hill, Greenfield, Massachusetts. Uh, my comment is to follow, um, in the context of what Mitchell Spade was talking about, and it continues on, uh, with the ADUs. ADUs can complicate the sale of a house in the future by raising the total assessed value of a property, putting it further out of reach for a family seeking to own a home, creating problems also for the renters when the house changes ownership and the new owner seeks to evict all tenants to raise rents. The proliferation of ADUs has implications also for our water and sewer capacity and our school budget as well. Detached ADU have been hooked up, have to be hooked up to the city water and sewer where it exists. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And I didn't see anybody sign up online. So if you did want to comment from online, can you just?
Yeah, David Singer put a comment in the chat.
Okay, I don't see the chat on here. So one second. Chat. One chat. Yeah, I see it there. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. Uh, David Singer, 41 Grinnell Street, Greenfield. I'm speaking a little bit of a combination of a citizen. I'm also chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I hope I get a little dispensation in terms of maybe having a little back and forth with you all instead of just being able to speak. I guess I, I, I want to commend those that wrote this by law, um, and I don't, I don't have any questions at this point about any of the technical aspects of it. It looks like Allison and FERCOG did an excellent job of studying the county, so I'll leave it to them and to you to make those decisions. Um, but I do have a concern, uh, from the zoning board's perspective of, uh, the notice requirements to the public or butters for, and the right to speak for, uh, the public and butters. Um, it, it's not clear to me. It, it seems to me, and that this is a subdivision control law uh, provision that, uh, changes the standard subdivision control law aspects by allowing for a special situation where things can be clustered as long as certain conditions are met. Uh, but I don't know if that's true or not, and I also don't know if it is a subdivision control type of situation. I, I'm not familiar as a zoning board member with this. I, I'm not familiar as a zoning board member with this, whether uh, you are required on the planning board level to uh, provide notice under the subdivision control law. To a butters, um, and then my question would be, so my first question is, is this part of that? If, if, tha- that's a question. The answer is yes, then we can move on into how the subdivision control law works. If the answer is no, then the next question is, um, there's been some questions that have arisen in the community. About the, the current uh, site plan review notice uh, provisions, which really are nothing except you have to follow the calendar. And um. And so that led to actually a uh, a, a person in a neighborhood um. Appealing a site plan review to the zoning board of appeals, and there really wasn't. I think that there was some confusion about um, those, that question. So I'm asking the planning board to think about it, uh, Allison, if you have experience with it, maybe you, maybe you don't, but. And also for the city council to take a hard look at it, because you had constituents that were calling you. And were not happy about the fact that things were happening and there was no uh, notice other than looking at the calendar. So, I've said a lot of different things, but um, there's the site plan review, is that a site plan review, which then needs more, I believe, more thought? Uh, and some originality about uh, notice. If it's subdivision control, does that mean there's a public hearing automatically? Which would take care of my question about that level of site plan review. And uh, and then the question is, even if people are noticed and they can come to the meeting. There's nothing in this that talks about uh, whether people have a right to speak or not, I know that the chairs. Of the subcommittees, uh, or the chair, certainly you, uh, Mr. Chair of the Planning Board. Uh, have the discretion to let people speak and uh, but um. So far, the, the uh, the city council has not made it mandatory for the. Chairs of the subcommittees to allow people to speak, so the question is um. You know, is this going to be an exception? Uh, and, and is the, is the city council and the planning board together going to see it? You have different perspectives, one is you have constituents, the other is your planning and. I understand that, but it, it was, it was a real thing that happened and uh, I think it's time to take a look at it, and I think the public has sort of. A right to hear what you have to say about it. Uh, so there's notice. How that notice will be provided, whether it's mandatory to provide a minimum amount of notice, which I think you should do, there should be a minimum amount of notice that you all agree is appropriate. And whether the statute calls for it, or you want to write a provision in there that says this is what you're going to do. I would suggest that you look at that based on what happened recently. And then the right to speak is, a public hearing is a place where people have a right to speak. But coming to and getting notice of a meeting is not necessarily a right to speak, so you have to decide. Uh, at what's level, so that's just the beginning part, then there's the idea that there are special incentives. And in the uh, in this proposal, you use the word special permit. And I think if you think the special permit is the special permit under forty-eight, section forty-eight. Uh, uh, and, and that's the criteria that you're going to use, then you might want to refer to that so that we know how the butters will be noticed. Cross referencing that statute. If you don't think special permit means the same thing as it does under forty-eight. Then I suggest that you define what it does mean and um, what the criteria are, what the notice requirements are, especially the idea of a public hearing and people having a right to speak. That's my main focus is giving uh, the public uh, as much right to be noticed and as much right to speak. As we on the boards can, can both tolerate and what is fair. So, thank you for listening, and if you want to have an exchange with me about it, and you are willing to do that, that's great, if you think I should have the same. Benefits as the other speakers, and that's my, that's my speaking, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else on the Zoom call that would like to speak, so if you would like to speak and you haven't put your name in the chat, can you say you would like to speak now?
I'd like to say your words.
Well.
My name is Alan Norman, Grinnell Street.
What's the address on Grinnell?
Twenty-one. Uh, I uh, was not planning to speak tonight, but I, I, there's a few things I wanted to share, some of it is process. You just approved minutes, um, I think they were the minutes of uh, you know, August first. Okay, um, as a citizen, I don't know what those minutes said, because they're A, not published on the website. And B, um, I don't know, for example, I don't know, there was a, I, I raised an issue. With your last meeting of the planning board. That the meeting was very confusing to the public, because all of us who are in the audience thought. That the uh, planning board had agreed to set up a task force, asked the mayor to set up a task force, and I went back and reviewed the. Uh, transcript of that YouTube uh, video. And really couldn't find uh, any, any clear evidence of what was going on at one point. The chairman said, I think we're all comfortable with this, so let's move on. Um, but I wondered whether the minutes covered that, but I, I can't. I can't know, because once again. You don't have minute, you all here tonight, the people who are on the planning board, you all have copies of, of the minutes, I don't. Um, and the members of the public don't, I could have asked Eric to send me a copy of the minutes, but that seems to be extreme. So I wanted to repeat the request I had last time to try to make this whole process more transparent. So that the, the uh, citizens of the, of the city can follow along. And be able to say, no, there's something missing from the minutes, I, I would, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's a section in there that dealt with the issue of task force. But I certainly, I certainly thought I heard it, and I certainly thought there should be something in there about. The, the, the planning board should have said, no, we don't want to form a task force. There's nothing on the tape that says that, and as a result, uh, the planner told me. The board decided not to have a task force on all these housing changes that were going to be made. Um, but there was nothing, nothing in the minutes that said, we don't want to do that. I'm just raising this, I, I don't want to go on with this, but it, there is a transparency problem. When we can't have access to the minutes that the members of the planning board alone have access to. Uh, the second thing I wanted to say, uh, and I'm not trying to scold people, I'm trying to just say that. That the, the public needs to be able to, I want to follow along, I'm sure there are other people. You can tell by the size of the, the voluminous size of the public presence tonight that nobody is interested. In open split space uh, cluster development. Um, that's bad, that's, we, we need to have more people coming to these meetings and caring about these meetings. So let me, let me just say one other thing, I want to tell you that um. Uh, the, the testimony you heard tonight is raising the issue of the, the um. L- lack of congruity between the open space development, which I basically think is fine. I, I, I will tell you, it's a bear to read, it's very difficult, it's going to be very difficult for the public to understand. With all these bonuses and so forth, it's a difficult ordinance to understand. Uh, even A- Allison said she'd be prepared to answer questions on it, but on the, particularly on the part of how you calculate. The bonuses, I, for example, I don't know how ADUs fit into this. If, if I, if I have a, a cluster development that I've built. And I want to uh, add ADUs. What do I do? Can I do that? Can I add ADUs to a cluster development? Uh, or is it just a single residential kind of, kind of ordinance? I don't know the answer to that, but um. In, in my, my, as I read this, I kept thinking about the incongruity between what we're trying to do. To single residential neighborhoods that have, uh, as, as Mitch said, um, a, a big house, small lot. It's one thing that somebody had discussed last time, big lawns. That in Greenfield, we have a number of, of, of parcels that have big lawns and, and certainly could take. Uh, accessory dwelling units, we also have a lot of units that don't have. Big lots, they have a big house and a small lot like where I live. And I want to just share with you, I think the figure I heard tonight, Allison, was. The goal of the ordinance was to preserve open space at fifty percent, is that correct?
Or? In the rural district.
Sorry, I don't mean to engage you, but it, it was, somebody can answer me, is it fifty percent or?
Can, can I answer?
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I'm just, you know, trying to follow real, um, yes, so it would be any, any uh, parcel that is um, in, in the, in the. Rural residential district, the R C, so the most uh, rural district, yeah, fifty percent of that parcel should be permanently protected if.
Okay.
Under the cluster.
So let me just give you, let me just give you my property as an example. Um, I live on a, a, um, point two one eight nine of an acre. That translates to around uh, um. Well, my ha- my house, the, the gross el- area, uh, uh, well, the, 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 the lot is nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five feet. Based on an acre, which is forty-three thousand five sixty. If you, if you take um, point two one eight nine, it's nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet. My building, my, my house is five thousand two hundred and forty-six gross uh, square footage. And what's left is four thousand two hundred and eighty-nine. It's actually forty-four percent open space. And what I'm saying is that if, if we in Greenfield want to, want to preserve open space. My lot already wa- is, it has too much on it. Um, and that's just the way things were built back in the eighteen eighties, when my house was built. Um, but I would never, ever consider putting an ADU on my property, however, people have said to me. That there are many neighborhoods, you know, like uh, uh, Pre- increasing five and elsewhere, where you have the same phenomenon, big house, small lot. Um, and I'm concerned that, that if we truly want to protect open space, we need to protect it for the, that small lot owner as well. I'm already at, at forty-four percent. So I just wanted to raise that to you, and I'm, I'm doing that so that hoping that you'll earmark that for the discussion that we have. Later about accessory dwelling units in another meeting, but it's coming hard and fast on this. And the proximity of the two didn't make sense to me, that I strongly support protecting open space. And I, I strongly support my, for example, my forty-four percent open space, which is mostly garden at this point. It's probably, it's more important to me than what's inside the house. So I don't, I don't want to, 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 I would like to have, just as in this ordinance. There was a limit, I think, uh, we said of five contiguous acres, that you, if I come to you for a. To, to, to construct a, um, a, a cluster development. Um, I have to have five continuous acres, or you can tell me, sorry, you don't qualify, you can't do that, this, this is not a program for you. I'd like that thought to carry over to the accessory dwelling unit concept that, that we not let, let parcels become, fall below fifty percent. Uh, uh, by the same kind of metric, because we are trying to protect open space, even, even in neighborhoods like the one I live in. So that we're not creating an over, uh, uh, what, what some people call up, uh, a hard density. Uh, over densifying an area, uh, I think that's a mistake as well. So anyway, um, thank you for listening to me, I, I am going to raise that issue again. And uh, I do want to keep banging on the transparency issue, I wanted to publicly thank Victor for what he said at the last meeting on August first. He offered, uh, and I thought it was a great thing, he offered to put online all the things that, that Eric doesn't have time to do. Um, a- as the single person in the planning, uh, planning department. Um, but believe me, I, I believe it would help the functioning of this, of the planning board. The, the uh, the city council already does this, they have the, they have a link that says see full agenda. And I can click on that, like when the chairs meeting happened, I can click on that link and see the entire, all the documents that. That the, 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 the city council is looking at, I, I'd like to see that here, because you're all, you're all honest and righteous people who want, I think you want the public to. To feel like this is important, this is important as it is to you, it should be to us. And I've been fighting for this for years to try to get more transparency into everything we do. So that we can bring people back into these meetings in this process, and I think the city council is trying to do that by having that. But there are still some of the subcommittees, you know, the, the Conservation Commission, same problem. Uh, but some of the subcommittees aren't publishing their minutes in ti- in a timely fashion, they're not publishing their, their full up agenda, so. I really want to urge the planning board to continue, I hope you'll take up Victor's offer to, to post some of these things, so that next time. We have a, a hearing on these kinds of things, the attendance will be four times what it is, ten times what it is tonight. Thank you for listening, me.
Thank you.
And good luck with it.
I, I don't see anybody else online, so if you are online and you want to speak, now would be the time. And I'm hearing no one, so I am going to close this public hearing at six forty-five P M.
I did want to um, respond to one thing uh, David Singer had brought up, but a question regarding um, and, and maybe confer with you, Allison, about this. Because when um, you had sent us materials, most recently, Allison, you'd also sent an update to chapter eight eighty. About the subdivision of land, and included the cluster development language in that. And uh, in. Reference. Under um. Eight eighty dash nine definitive plans, uh, G, public hearing. Says the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the definitive plan in accordance with master law, chapter forty-one. Section eighty-one T, which requires advertising, uh, and notification of all the butters by registered mail. Um. And uh, so it speaks to that, David, I think what you were talking about. Um, as far as notifying a butters and having a public hearing with relation to um. With relation to a plus, I've, I've. A subdivision issue and, um, the uh, open space cluster development included in that. Chapter as well, I'm sorry, Eric's not here to confer with, I don't know. Allison, you have a perspective on it, if I'm interpreting that correctly, that if there were open space cluster development all within that guideline?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Victor, because he is asking to speak.
Um, I'm just looking at the form that was provided by Eric, and both of your boards need to officially move and second to close the public meeting according.
You're, you're fading, Victor, you're saying that you also need to, we need to move in second to close the hearing.
You're hearing.
Oh, so we have to, I guess that, there's, yeah, we both need it separately is what he's saying, although he kind of faded out.
Correct, yes, both, according to this form, both boards have to move in second, closing the public hearing.
We haven't actually closed the public.
Thank you, Victor. You said that.
I don't think you have to vote on it, I just think the chairs have to close the public.
Oh, is that right?
Okay.
The form, the form. The form says moved by, seconded by, I'm just reading the form.
Thank you. The planning board, we can certainly do that, um, I didn't know if, uh, we haven't officially closed it, if we want to, I know, uh, Mr. Singer had requested a, a bit of a.
So is this on your agenda to discuss tonight as well?
This is related, related to the open space cluster development.
The public hearing is meant to speak to the public, though. If you want to talk about it after, I'm not closing the E D C meeting yet, we will vote, uh, adjourn our meeting after.
Okay.
So I just want to close the public hearing, so.
Um, fair enough, okay.
And then we could continue our discussions after.
Okay.
So um, we're going to re-close the public hearing at six forty-eight P M, if I get a second.
Second.
Six forty-eight, so. And Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Okay. That.
And motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And all planning board members in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Unanimously, Victor, thank you. Thanks for keeping us on track.
I didn't mean inter- inter- just following the form.
Yeah, I don't have that form, so. Um, so now we're going to keep discussions open between councilors and the planning board from here on out, um, no more public comment. So you can continue what you're saying, and then we'll go around if Councilor Gordon or. Um, Councilor Garrett have any questions as well, let's take this time to talk about it, and then when we're satisfied, we'll close our E D C hearing and we'll go over the planning board hearing. Okay.
So I was, I was reading from that uh, within the um. Subdivision of land section, chapter eight eighty, and it does speak to the question of public hearing. And Allison, I, I wanted to check with you if uh, you had a perspective on that from your understanding of uh. Because that's, that's something you had added the cluster development to, uh, information to.
Um, in terms of the public hearing, I'm, I'm not sure, I think I, I only added in the uh, conservation analysis findings to the subdivision. But sorry, are you asking about having a? But sorry, are you asking about having a public hearing on the subdivision regs separately? That would be a question for Eric. My understanding is, is boards can typically, um, I, I think it would, I don't think you have to have a public process. I believe boards can do that on their own, but I would definitely check with Eric on that. But, um, yeah, it should be a separate process at, at a minimum.
Do we have any more comments from either councillor Gordon or Garrett?
I do have one, but I'm happy to hear if Rachel's got any, you know, being the chief of the digital wireless.
A couple of questions, thanks. And apologies for, for not being able to be there in person. Um, Allison, thank you so much for the presentation. That was super helpful, uh, because a lot, I had a lot of questions coming into this. Um, it was really about kind of the, the why of a lot of these changes. And you answered a lot of those questions, um, in that presentation. So I do, I agree, it would be great to share that presentation with the entire committee and the entire council. I think the two main questions that, that I still have are, um, why the limits on multi-family dwellings? Um, I think that right now it's limited to thirty percent and I'm, I'm sure there's reasoning behind that. But certainly, you know, with the housing shortage, we have, I think there are arguments for increasing, you know, multi, multi-family dwellings all over the city. So I'm curious about that. Um, and I'm also curious, um, in section H, which I think is now section I, um, with the changes, why the, the wetlands language was struck? Because it seems like that would actually reduce, uh, the, the open space calculation. Those are my two main things. There are some other, you know, things that I can dig into and, um, I'm sure that, you know, there'll be amendments and with the language eventually, but those are my, my two big ones.
Great, thank you. Those are great questions and, um, yeah, I know a lot of this is a little squarely. Um, to your question about the multi-family homes, so we did, uh, scrap the, the cap on, um, the multi-family home. So previously it said that multi, either two-family, three-family or multi-family homes will be capped at thirty percent of the cluster and we should have struck that. Um, so there is, there should no longer.
I think there's one place that it was struck and changed to fifty and there's another place where it still says thirty. I'll see if I can.
I think so, so in the, in the density bonus, it, I think it's, um, there's language in there that says if the developer puts in more than thirty percent, then we will reward them for that with a density bonus, so.
Yeah, so I think, um, I see that, um, in section E permitted uses, um, which is on page four of the document I'm looking at. It, uh, in number one, uh, it says in mixed-use developments, multi-family dwelling units shall not exceed thirty percent of the total number of dwelling units. So maybe that's just an oversight and we need to, to strike that and update the language.
Yeah, that should be scrapped. That was struck, so maybe that was just missed in, um, this update. Thank you.
I'll just offer that I think we're talking about, uh, a version issue. Because the latest version, if the planning board has new, it reads differently. It does not include reference to the thirty percent.
Got it.
In E one.
Thanks, yeah.
Sorry about you folks not having the latest version.
No worries, thanks.
Sorry, because that was a change that we were excited about making.
Good change.
So, and then to your second question about the, the wetlands being struck, um, let me just pull up my slide so I can show the language. So you're talking about right here where it says this section?
I'm trying to compare it to the document that I'm looking at. I think, I think I'm referring to a different section. I don't know if, if someone else who's looking at the.
Yeah, I, I think what it is, is councillor Gordon, is before wetlands did not count towards your overall acreage. If correct by reading it. And now they're saying you could, you could actually use wetlands count towards your total acreage because they're still part of the property. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Oh, got it. So would that be towards the total acreage or the what's considered like common space or open space? I might just.
It looks like it, it common space, it says. So you could use it in your calculations for common space to get to your bonuses. You still can't build on it. You can't build on it, but it counts as your, it counts as equitable land on that parcel. Rather, before wetlands were not counted as equitable land on the parcel.
Okay. So it doesn't reduce the open space requirement? I think that's my main question. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Councillor Garrett? The only one I was going to highlight is the one that councillor Gordon mentioned without, okay, having a multi-family housing. So I'm really glad that was struck.
Yeah, I pulled up, I pulled up the version that's posted online and, and in section E, that, that line is not struck. So I don't know.
I think that's where I got the version that I'm looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know.
Our agenda definitely was a different version. Um, and the only other thing is just, I really appreciate that the conservation commission has a role in this. I grew up in Hatfield, which is a very rural community that has a lot of farm fields that developers love to build on. And that is the last thing I want to see. So having the conservation commission involved in this is huge as far as personally, you know, making me feel more comfortable voting for this, knowing that there are folks who value that actually being involved. Um, so I'm, I'm glad to see that. And, um, Mr. Singer is common about notification, I think is really important. And, you know, in addition, you know, Mr. Norman talking about, you know, the transparency, the ability to see documents. Logistically, you know, Mr., you know, Eric is one person, so I understand why it's difficult to get this stuff out right away. But it is helpful to see it. So I don't agree about A D Us, for example, but I do agree about transparency and following along. I was public. That's really all I've got.
Yeah, um, thank you councillor Garrett. I had one question slash concern and maybe it's covered in some language somewhere. But under section F, lots and units, um, it's the last strike through about public ways and private ways. How are we addressing access to the properties if we're excluding requirement to a public way or private way? And it's not stated anywhere else as, you know, so I think what you really wanted to do is take rid of the Greenfield subdivision regulations. But I think you want to keep a requirement to have a public way or private way to that development. Otherwise, people can legally park on the street and walk their house.
You said with section?
Yeah, yes, it's the last strike through under section F, lots and units.
But, but what?
Uh, number three all the way to the bottom.
Because they, again, there might be a version issue here that we don't have it as a strike through.
Say it one more time, the page that was.
Page nine of the document.
Thank you.
And I know it's very minor, but it's just a good lawyer will find his way around that one. For developer.
Oh, that's, yeah.
And you're saying F?
It's under F three. Three, three. Just before G, just before G, for the density bonus.
You guys seeing that?
Yeah. Oh, I'm looking at the one that's online.
Yeah, it's, it's right here. I don't, I don't think that should have been, I don't, at least I don't remember making that change.
Trying to think why that would, that. The only way I could think of, maybe you guys talked about it and you didn't want it to follow like the subdivision regulations, so you struck it out. But it's, you know, so just something to look at.
Yeah, I don't, um, recall if it's not in here because this version, it was struck out, um, that I have here that Allison sends. And this is the August, uh, draft. I don't recall either during any of our discussions deciding to eliminate that.
Well, what, I mean, Allison, what would the logic be if we did, given the goals of the, the proposal, does that help or is that not necessary to strike? Maybe we just forgot why, but it's a good idea.
No, I, I don't think that should be struck.
It was just maybe a technical error.
Yeah.
Someone meant to just strike two and grab three also.
Yeah, I remember striking two because it was redundant with something else, but I don't remember striking three.
It's just as simple as there was no space between it and paragraphs and so it all got selected.
Double click it and, yeah.
Yeah, no, Garrett's the whole thing.
I, I think it's an artifact and something like that because I don't remember us discussing that or having any rationale for.
So should we memorialize that we wanted to make sure that the thirty percent multifamily D's was struck? And make sure this is unstruck. Those are the two substantive changes so far, right? And that's really all I had.
Yeah.
I'll go around to the councillors one more time.
The one last thing is I would love to see the map that Furco put together showing the developable lands. Very much a person that benefits from visuals and I think the public and the rest of the council will too. So seeing that so we know what we're gonna do, basically. You know, I have a concept of it, that presentation was super helpful. But again, that map would also be, just want to mention it again.
Yeah, I made a note to make sure, uh, through Eric and Allison getting, uh, the council, the, the presentation tonight, the map. Also, uh, clarifying about that we have the correct version of the, of the draft ordinance that gets to everybody.
Thank you. So I'm just going to circle around to the E D C. Go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, one other question, um, one other thing that I wondered about is if we would consider adding language in, um, previous section H, not the, what would new, now be section I. It looks like you added a section about conveying land to a nonprofit land trust with the principal purpose of conservation of farmland, which I think is great. Um, and I wonder if we could also consider, um, adding maybe a letter E or adding something to, you know, the current section D about, um, community land trusts and, and, you know, whose principal purpose is really affordable housing. Because I think that, that those are kind of equally, um, important uses and, and things that, that we want to champion in, in Greenfield. So I would love to see that included if that's possible.
What section was that again?
Um, it's current section H, uh, number four, letter D. At the top of my page seven. That's awful.
Oh, yes.
And, and just again, for version control on the one, the draft I printed out from August, that's section I, uh, titled common open space requirements.
Right.
And you're suggesting adding a letter of a conveyance to a community land trust?
Right. Whose principal purpose is to, um, I, I don't, I don't have the exact language, um, that I would suggest. But essentially, whose principal purpose is, uh, to promote affordable housing. While also conserving the land, yeah.
Now, we're talking about the open space, not the open of the land, right?
Right. Yeah.
Why would a mini land trust? I don't know. We could put that, and I just don't know if, if it's the open space, you wouldn't put housing on it. Yes, it's, I was a little confused by that too, because like what they're trying to, they're trying to preserve that open space for recreation, um, hiking trails, agricultural uses. So if you put that in there, then it gives the developer the right to say, hey, buy right. I could also build sixty units of low-income housing in this previously undeveloped land.
Right, so the, the community land trust, I think it, it's not just a regular affordable housing development. And Allison, please correct me if I'm wrong here, because I'm sure that you know, uh, a lot more about this than I do. But, um, it's, it's about kind of finding the sweet spot of con, land conservation, uh, that also allows for affordable housing, so it would preserve land. So that, you know, that then can't be sold off later to a developer that would put housing on it. Um, but, so it wouldn't necessarily allow more housing to be built now. And I think that we could, you know, create the language to make sure that that's the case here. Um, while also not necessarily restricting it to a land trust that, you know, would only be about preserving the open land.
Okay, that makes sense.
I was wondering if it, that would be covered by a corporation or trust owned. Oh, okay. So for section B, maybe the stipulation that the trust is owned by the owners of the lots or units would allow, if, if, if that wasn't there, it would allow for a land trust to own the land and preserve it permanently? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Right, it would be either or. I mean, I think that it would, it could be a trust, uh, community land trusts, I think, are not owned by the owners of the lots. That's sort of the idea is that the, a, in a community land trust, to my understanding, you know, the, the owners of the buildings, you know, they, they own the, the buildings on the property, but the land itself would be owned by the land trust. So it's sort of the opposite of it being a trust that's, that's owned by the owners of the lots or units.
I'll confess to being a little confused. The section four starts with such common open space shall be either. And that's the open space. And they're suggesting this additional would be conveying it so that it could be developed on?
No, no, that's what I'm, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm not explaining myself clearly. I'm, I'm just suggesting that it could be conveyed to a, a land trust that, whose purpose is farmland preservation or opens like forest land preservation or a community land trust whose purpose is still preserving open space. But their primary purpose, it would just give us more options of who could, who the open space could be conveyed to.
And then circling, circling back to my question, I think I answered my one question. They, you guys just reallocated that line to a different section. So it's now under J improvements about the, the access.
Okay. Oh, okay.
You moved those to the different section.
Got it.
I knew, I knew we didn't delete.
Thank you for your thoroughness. Yeah, I remember, we, we, a, a couple of things, we moved them from one place.
For applicability or something.
And through a lot of iterations, so.
It was at the bottom of the page, so I missed it.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Absolutely.
Um, just about, uh, some, why some language was struck. There's a, there was a requirement, um, in the initial, the original language that the cluster developed, that the plan be superior to a conventional plan and preserving open space. And I'm wondering why that language was struck. Um, I'm going to look for where it is so that I can actually make this a useful question. Now, section L, previously section K, number two, under the criteria for approval. I'm wondering if it would just be assumed that the, uh, the cluster development plan is superior to a conventional plan if it's meeting the other requirements here? And so that language was deemed unnecessary or if there's another reason it was taken out?
Was that about comparing how many units it would be or something like that?
Yeah, there was another section where there was a requirement for the developer to jump through a lot of hoops to prove that the, that this would be better when we want to make it easier for developers to use the cluster. So I think it fell under that argument.
Got it.
How they would prove that.
I did, yeah, my follow-up question was going to be how are they supposed to prove that it's superior to a conventional one?
Usually that's done by requiring that they pay an engineer to do a plat plan that nobody's ever going to use and it just make the development cost more.
That's exactly what we want.
Any other questions by councillors? So, um, if all the councillors are, um, all set with questioning, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I was second.
You have to make a motion.
Oh, uh, I motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Um, the E D C meeting has ended at seven oh nine P M. If you guys are up.
And thanks for taking care of this. The, uh, virtual.
I'll take over.
I say, yeah, yeah, thanks. So, um, now the planning board is moving on to making a recommendation. So now the planning board is moving on to making a recommendation to the council on this proposed change to the zoning ordinance for open space cluster development. A motion to make a recommendation to the city council?
Yes, so moved.
So, based on what we just talked about, the tweaks we do I second it, and then we talk about it, then we vote on it? Second.
Thanks. So discussion. Because I know we had a few things we were talking about that went back and forth a little bit and got clarified, so we should talk about what, any, any adjustments from what we have down on paper?
Yes. I didn't have any additional ones beyond what was discussed.
Well, I know, for example, Council Healy's thing, we said, oh, it actually go back in, and we, and then he realized we had actually just, we had deleted it, couldn't be moved it. So, and I believe the thirty percent thing in E, I think, again, that's a version control issue. And I'm sorry that the versions aren't matching what's available online. Because I know, Allison, this version, the draft you sent in August, E, that did, E one did not have that thirty percent mentioned at all. So I don't think that would be a change from what we're proposing, because that's, unfortunately, things get get aligned, they haven't been updated, and it's really it's, it's good that they're accessible, but it's bad that they're not always matching the latest. So were, were there other things? I know Council Gordon had suggested that addition to I, or that's what I have is I. Was, was there anything else you're referencing, Jeff, that, because we should be explicit if we're adjusting changes?
One thing that I was curious about is, I'm looking at the purpose and the description again. Just to make sure this is the purpose of this district isn't conflated with other proposals that are being discussed in, you know, different hearings and different meetings. My understanding of what open space means in this case, it's referring to public open space as opposed to, you know, just a lot coverage concern within a private parcel. It, or and or referring to ecologically relevant open space, I think, like Allison in your diagram, what we saw when we had the cluster development was there was a, a forest that was possible, where you couldn't do that before. So that's a, an ecosystem that is big enough to matter just for the natural, you know, for, for ecological reasons. Now, I know there's recreational, we talk about it possibly being parkland or, or utilized by the city as a park. But the purpose of it is, it's not open space, in this case, is not the exact same, it's not the same open space that we refer to when you talk about lot coverage, or, you know, how much of a parcel a house takes up versus the front yard, those sorts of things. It's a different goal here. Within the parcels, you have a, a distal set of criteria that are more about setbacks and things like that, but when we talk about open space, we're trying to protect here. It's those other categories I talked about before. Is that true? Is that the sort of thing that's worth defining here, just to make clear what the, the purpose is and is not? Or is it already clear? We just need to reread it?
I think the fact that we're just talking about cluster developments in and of itself is enough definition of what the open space is for. We're not really concerning ourselves with the topics that have been brought up regarding the ADUs in other areas of the, of the town. We're looking at what's a cluster development, how much of that space can be conserved for open space, and that's what we're limited to. We're really not addressing all the other, as I understand, we're not addressing any other zoning ordinances or implications whatsoever. Just what is a cluster development? And how much open space can a cluster develop, or should a cluster develop and preserve? And that's it. So open space in this is very limited in this particular context of what we're talking about tonight. We haven't addressed anything, open space in any other area at all that I'm aware of.
And also, just to be clear, and maybe it also goes without saying, the parcels that are established by the subdivision, the cluster development subdivision, are themselves subject to the rest of the zoning ordinance.
That's how I would understand it, absolutely. They're, they're not, they're not exceptions of anything. It's just, I guess basically what we're trying to do is get as many housing units as we possibly can on a proper piece of property and preserve it at the same time. Because the best way to preserve open space, in my opinion, is increase the density of the space we have. If we keep wanting to build private houses with private lots of forty thousand acres, we're not going to build nearly enough houses to serve any of our housing needs. And the best way to get our housing costs down, again, in my opinion, is to have a surplus of housing. So if we can build more housing on less land, we should go for it. And that's, this is just one of our tools trying to address that. There are many others, Steve, as you mentioned. You know, the height ordinances, you know, building higher level and things like that. So this is very, a very small piece of the problem, and I think it's, the scope of it's very limited. That's how I've been understanding it.
Hey, Victor. Did you wanna?
There are some, I just have to re-remind myself. There, there are some, there is some language about what you can do within the, the parcels, and there's some discretion by the planning board about how to navigate that based on whether or not, you know, changes to those setbacks would do more to improve protection of natural and scenic resources, those sorts of things. So there is some latitude. It, it does kind of become its own little parcel, but it still is a little bit special compared to a typical parcel somewhere else in town.
You, you were speaking to the purpose first, and I think, you know, there was several components of that, of consuming less open land, efficient use of land in harmony with natural features. So it, it seems to me, permanent preservation of open space agricultural lands and other natural resources. It seems to me that captures the, the spirit and intent. I want to mention too that the, because this is a pretty opaque document. You know, you're trying to come, come to it, and just to clarify about the adjustment of the slope and wetlands being part of the calculation. And the rationale we talked about was that that is, is relevant land from the point of view of habitat. And so we wanted to, even though it wouldn't be something that would be human recreation on it, it's, it has value, and so that we were trying to balance out, you know, the preservation of all forms of non-developed space. So I just wanted to share that with the public, because that was, again, something that it wouldn't be totally obvious if you just read in the document by itself. And as far as the recreation for the public, open to the public, that's one of the incentives. Includes recreational opportunities for the public by providing access to walking trails or other passive forms of recreation. So that's a, a bonus.
Yes, that's all coming through, right? Uh, one thought based on Counselor Gordon's comments about the land trust. We talk about a bonus if the if there, if it contains units that count towards greenfields ten percent portable housing requirement. What about units that would, would it, would, would, if you had units that were dedicated to a land trust or something, if a land trust developed a cluster development, shouldn't they get a bonus just because they're a land trust, and they're gonna, they, you know, their interests are similar complementary or parallel to the interest of, of this, or are they covered by these other rules, and we don't need to give them special authority? Would be open to giving, Allison, did that show up anywhere? If, if cluster development is done by a nonprofit that's expressly, you know, mission driven to permanently preserve affordable housing, maybe they get special treatment?
I never saw that, but yeah, I'm trying to think if that would fit under. Are you talking about giving them a, an additional bonus?
I guess one question is does the, if the units count towards greenfields ten percent affordable housing requirements up by chapter forty B?
Yeah.
Is that always the same as a community land trust, or can that include units that can expire and no longer be affordable sometime in the future?
That's, I, I cannot answer that with certainty. I don't know how many changes we can make now that we've had a public hearing, but if you wanted to be sure, you could add that as a separate category.
So maybe that's a question. George, are we does adding, changing this at this time make this take long? We have to go back to the drawing board somewhat. We only change it if we think there's a fatal flaw, but otherwise try not to change it.
The, the, the issue is whether or not it's deemed a substantive change.
Okay.
So that someone could be tweaked around the edges, but if it's deemed a substantive change, then it has to go through the whole process again.
So do we think adding a caveat that if the affordable units are permanently affordable, maybe you get a slightly higher bonus? That a major change or a minor change?
It would be helpful to have Eric here, but to get his, I'm sorry, what were you saying, Victor?
Are we trying to provide for the exceptions and not the rules? I mean, it sounds like we're trying to cover every possible thing, and what is the likelihood that some company is gonna come as a land trust to purchase the land to build the houses? I just assumed, I think it's, I think the tool is really good. I think the sooner we can get it out there, the better, and I, I think we can go on forever trying to refine it.
Me, this is a great tool for land trusts specifically, but maybe they have enough carrots in here. We can just leave it alone and see how it works. The other thing is with this and many other regulations, you do just have to kind of let it out into the wild and see what happens.
Yeah.
Whatever that map looks like, ninety-nine percent of those lots are never gonna get developed in our lifetimes anyway, so. Then you can just stop, take my magnifying, put my magnifying glass away and, and let it go.
The other thing I would say is I was intrigued when Counselor Gordon brought that up, but I confess ignorance about some of the, the ins and outs of a, a community land trust, and so, so the planning board initiated this, but the council is gonna get recommendations both from this body and from the EDC. And since Counselor Gordon initiated this, I mean, there, there's always the question, if you're proposing a change, is it something that was insignificant enough? And we obviously don't have, at the moment, Eric's, you know, guidance on that, and I don't know if any of us have a clear enough sense of, you know, if that where that would fit in, because I know Counselor Gordon was initially suggesting a different spot to add, add a section, subsection there. But it could always, at the EDC, they could make that suggestion and, and perhaps deliberate that more fully and effectively. And, and then the council could get recommendation on the current version from this body and a recommendation perhaps with a recommended tweak from the EDC, and then the council would make the decision.
Yeah, okay.
As long as whatever addition was made or, or tweak wasn't deemed subsequent.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure exactly who deems that. So sometimes it's obvious, but sometimes not.
Yeah, so, okay, great, thank you, Tom.
Sure.
A lot. Insist.
But, oh, ultimately, were there then any other, is it, is it kind of as is, we'd be voting on it?
Yeah.
As far as the recommendation to the council? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all board members in favor of moving a positive recommendation to the, the council?
I.
I, it's unanimous. Great. Allison, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
It's been a good two years. I know. I'm, I'm the only board member who was there at the start, but I appreciate it throughout, and, and appreciate it also when there was quite a bit of board changeover in last month, so we kind of restarted the process a little bit and, and visited fresh, and I know you brought the newer members of the board up to speed very well, and we had some fresh perspectives on it, so we made some adjustments to what had been the draft prior to that, so. And that's been a great process, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's been great to work with you all. Thank you for the fresh eyes, because I think our final draft has some great tweaks, and hopefully we can get in the book soon.
And we'll, I'll confer with Eric about, you know, making sure some of those, you know, getting that, those items that EDC was requesting.
Yeah, and I'll Yep, and I'll do the slides and then the memo that has the map, because I think the memo explains the methodology and has some caveats. If it is gonna be publicly available, you know, we don't want to make it seem like all of those parcels are gonna be subdivided, so I think like, I would not want to separate the map from the explanation.
Very good. And also just double check with Eric, and we can confer about this, about, to make sure we have the latest version, so it's, everyone has the same thing.
Okay.
They're looking at, so.
Yep.
Great, and, and potentially you can come to the city council when it is gonna be decided, the full council will be deciding to answer questions, I think we're hopeful for that too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure I could be there.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, yep, see you all later. Bye.
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 Next item, discussion item, planning board discussion of potential amendments to the major development review ordinance. And we have, since we had the last preliminary discussion about this, we did get some additional materials from Eric. And I don't know, Victor, as this norman was alluding to, there was, you know, you were stressing as clerk, an intention to try to get documents that the, the board is utilizing, available to the, I don't know if that happened in this instance with those documents.
No, Eric has not reached out to me since we had that meeting to, I think he was gonna try and get me some sort of access to some sort of a a webpage or a Dropbox type thing that was, I will follow up until I get back into the States, but I have not heard from him on that issue.
Appreciate your initiative on that and efforts on that. So the, just a review for, for folks, you can't see it, and Eric had referenced this in the past, that he had done a on the mass planners lister, did an inquiry about other communities with a major development review or something similar. This was actually initiated doing this in two thousand nineteen, and only came up with seven others, Georgetown, Great Barrington, Nantucket, Northampton, Randolph, Wellesley, and Westfield. They have various designations, some are specifically major development review, but some of them have other designations. And I'd also, for the prior discussion, had disseminated the changes that we made back in.
George?
Yes.
George, can I ask for five minutes, so I can see if I can find another place where I can plug my laptop in, so you guys like take a five minute break, let me see if I can, because I'm getting ready to lose my laptop in about fifteen minutes.
Of course.
All right, just give me five minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Not even sure where he is. I think he's traveling.
I don't know. Kind of looks like I'm on talent.
Let's see what's up with that, dude, but nuts.
Kind of like you.
Yes.
Can you, this is the MDR rules regulation for the patch. Throw that into the net. I mean, this is the other, this is a planning board document. And it's the other thing that gets used with an MDR, but often overlooked in terms of if you're talking about changes to make to the MDR, a lot of stuff comes into play when you actually sit down. When you actually sit down to do it and you use these uh regulations for impact statements. And I don't know. In the past, where the, this probably hasn't been looked at in a while, this one says two thousand and six. Some of the revisions that were made to the MDR were to the statute board, MDR, in other words, that. That's a mean, so. Side of the zoning code, you also have this document, I don't know if people even see it. Um, give us a copy of it.
Uh, you know, yeah, yeah, but thank you. Yeah. Why is this?
A lot of interesting stuff in there. That I think. Need some spitting up.
Thank you.
Is that the title of that document?
It's called the uh, uh, MDR. Rules and regulations for impact statements.
Okay.
It's a, it's, I think this is the code. Code is uh, eight forty, uh, in the, in the. The town's code, city's code, eight, eight forty-two dash one, where it starts, for this. To provide the SPGA. A sufficient information to conduct a detailed review of use if they have to touch with the fact to the environment, the body of property is. There's a pretty key document. What is called rules and regulations, and that's the code number eight forty-two dash one, then it goes down. About six or seven pages.
I think it's after the, in in here, did you find it?
Uh, I only have the zoning code right now.
Oh.
Front of me.
Okay.
But, um, yeah.
Thanks.
I understand the purpose.
The MDR is actually done.
Yeah, it's the impact.
They're looking at impact statements, so this tells them what she needs to be in.
Right.
It has a lot of stuff on traffic and so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, George.
And thank you, I was, I was saying, I'm not sure where you are, but um, I appreciate you. You are remote, well, really appreciate you. Really.
Yeah. I'm doing my best with these minutes, I, I am not a minute taker, but I, I need to listen to the recording to make sure of everything, but I'm doing my best.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you under the circumstances, uh, uh, serving the town by attending and also serving the board by. Taking the, taking the notes, thank you. So while you were away, um, Mr. Norman pointed out that there's an additional document that's related to major development review. It's um, it's a town's chapter eight forty-two dash one, uh, it's rules and regulations for impact statements, which um. Was last revised in two thousand and six, so it's something to, uh, I'm I'm not sure if it's in um. The um, it's in the um packet I got of the zoning ordinance, it's a, it's an addendum. But I'm not sure if everyone has it, so um, so uh, just wanted to. Affirm that is something for us to attend to as well. And um, I was starting to say that about the, the timing of the changes that were made. Um, to the MDR, that was in two thousand nine, March of two thousand nineteen. And I had um, sent around previously to the board, um, a summary of. Uh, prior to that vote, it was um, to inform the planning board discussion, um, uh. Just before that uh, council vote and, and it included uh, the proposed changes um. And the original um, language of the MDR, so that's something planning board members. Have, uh, so that is a reference point to what things have been changed from and all those changes were, were um, made. So it's a um, it's a discussion item, so it's. Open for, you know, kind of where the board wants.
My understanding of 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 the, and of the planning board is, is to shepherd. The master plan and to kind of shepherd. Uh, changes and development of the town and to that end, I, I don't understand why we would. Want to be left out. Of uh, anything personally, I mean, I think. Um, anything that someone wants to do with regards to, I mean, we're development in the broadest sense. Development of any area of the town should be at the planning view, at least gets a look at. So that can make sure that it fits with those models and fits with the direction. That citizens in the board of the town want to go, so remember our discussion we had early on. Um, regarding what kind of triggers we think. Should be for the MDR and I agreed with Steve early on when he, he actually mentioned several streets. You know, anything that's going to occur on particular streets in the town should definitely come before the planning board, like Federal Street, Main Street, High Street, you know. Whatever we decide as far as I, I had a Deerfield Street and, you know, um. Two east or west, you know, anything that's a main coming into the town or part. It's certainly something that if someone felt something, should automatically be reviewed regardless of size, its footprint, its use. So that we know. I would think that's, so I, I, that's my thought of what. Board is, is about, so am I going in the wrong direction? To be looking at everything that happens.
Sure, well, you know, again, one way to think of it is um, uh. For different zones, you know, the, you know, zones have been created and um. There's different standards for some forms of development in each zone. And there's also uh, based on criteria, there are uh, things that require a site plan review. Things that require special permit and things that require major development review, it's kind of an incremental. Degree of scrutiny for each one of those things, plus um, uh, it it shifts. As we were talking about earlier and David Singer was alluding to, uh, it also for the latter two, special permit major development review. It triggers public involvement and public input, where it's a site plan review does not. Automatically notify the public or guarantee uh, participation, um. So I, I don't know as far as the idea of doing it by uh, by particular streets, I get the. I get the idea behind that, um. Uh, so um. And and that's, I think, you know, kind of the broad thinking we want to do, we're considering the uh, the MDR, so we have that as a, as a. Um, you know, it's in the books in the zoning ordinance now with those uh, adjustments were made in two thousand and nineteen. Um, that were to, were made without, you know, acknowledged without much research or comparison with other communities and stuff. And um, uh, it also made a switch of the special permit granting authority. From the planning board to the ZBA, that was part of the package. That was proposed to the council and the council voted on.
I don't, I don't see an issue with, with that.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, I don't remember that there was a particular um rationale, there's been some. I, I, I don't know exactly what the rational is for some of these, like the ADU has bounced back and forth between the planning board, the ZBA, and then the plant put again. Being the special permit granted authority and this package of regarding the MDR included shifting it to the um. Zoning Board of Appeals, so I just wanted to mention that, because you were talking about the planning board's group back some things, so.
I, I could, I could, I could see a differentiation of uses, I mean, I could see the planning board being the board, looks at it. Make sure it's what we. Believe and we, as we try and begin shepherd what the town wants, what we see. And we see everything fine, we say, okay, this is a plan that we can work with, and then I could see this on ZBA having to deal with any outstanding issues it may have. You know, something in that plan review that we think works very well, wants to stick an ADU on it, then I have no problem with them being the people that would then. Take that level, but. I just don't know what our purpose is if we're not supposed to watch what happens in the town.
If, if we're not, what again, sorry?
If we're not supposed to see what's happening, if there's some other place where we can go to, where we can see everything that's happening. In town and then weigh in on it too, then I'm fine with it, but I, I don't know of any other vehicle. You know, that we would have the ability to weigh in on things like, you know, the. I, I like Steve's idea of the particular towns, because those are our front doors. So we should see anything that's going to come in on our front. Packs everyone who comes into our town and, and potential businesses, potential uh, owners, potential visitors. So we should know what's happening on our, on our main thoroughfares. I also agreed with um, Steve on some of his things that he didn't think were important, uh, epic being a particular issue. You know, the not, the actual hard numbers of. But maybe a percentage change is interesting, so if we have, let's say, a vacant lot. It's on a residential street and all of a sudden someone wants to develop it and it's going to go from sixty trips a day to three hundred and fifty. That's something that we should see, it below throws, it falls thresholds. Doesn't meet any of the threshold limits to us, but that's a significant change to a community, so wouldn't that be something that we would want to see? You know, again, that's, that's what I'm trying to do. And I, I thought that's what this was about, was to look at. Trying to broaden. The things we would look at, not with any intention of delaying or slowing anything down, I think it's our duty to act as quickly as possible. And it comes before us, but if we don't know it's, if we don't know it, who we act on, so that's my two cents.
Thanks.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Victor, and I know that um, according to our published agenda, the, the focus is specifically on the major development review. Ordinance and potential amendments to that, and I'll frame again that um, one, the, the. Uh, major changes that were made were going from a thousand um, trips per day. Um, in the general commercial district and five hundred, uh, and then the other district and it was um. Uh, switched to from one thousand to three thousand and from five hundred to fifteen hundred. Uh, vehicle trips per day and as far as the square footage, um, it would trigger it, um. It went from fifteen, a hundred fifty thousand square feet in the planned industry, I mean, a hundred thousand to one hundred fifty thousand. And from fifteen thousand to thirty-five thousand square feet, central commercial, general commercial and from forty thousand. Seventy-five thousand in all other districts and again, these were. Um, changes that were, it was part of a, it was referred to as a deal to get a vote for the. Uh, funding for the um, uh, library. Um, so again, it was acknowledged, these numbers were kind of. Put together to make it, it was a concern, uh, the current standard uh, was uh. You know, this would allow for easier, easier, an easier path for approval of projects.
Alright, alright, so less involvement of the planning board.
What was that?
Bas- basically involvement of the planning board, which is by class, planning board, the planning board doesn't need to see this stuff.
Right, by changing those triggers, then it, it wouldn't, and there was also the last one. That um, there was a section that any expansion of existing use, which I assume meant something that would have been under, that would have. Fallen under the MDRs uh, standards, um, a significant expansion would require um, uh. A review, uh, and that section was deleted entirely, um. And I noticed that that is a, it's actually one of the examples we got, um. Georgetown, I think it was. Had that exact language as well, like any expansion of existing use, when it exceeds the above thresholds, um. Would be uh, you would apply the MDR process, so. And, and again, uh, there had been uh, two efforts in the recent past to um. To increase the um. Uh, to decrease rather than the vehicle trips, uh, to a compromised position, again, it happened a thousand. And currently it's three thousand, there have been two proposals to reduce it to two thousand. And that was um, one was initiated by a counselor and one was initiated by a citizen petition. And um, in both cases, the planning board uh, voted to support that, uh, but the council did not. Accept those and it was at one of the last one, when a counselor spoke to the idea of um. Hearing something like that from the planning board be uh, would be helpful. If there was going to be a proposal like that.
Alright.
So that's, that's what, you know, when we had decided as we were, you know, considering things to address this year, that was um. One factor and as I had shared, not for people around the board right now, but in the intervening years after two thousand. Nineteen, uh, the majority of the board had expressed an interest at some point to revisit this, because the board had voted. Um, at the time, two thousand nineteen, I voted four to one, uh, to uh, recommend against these changes that were made.
The, the Victor's points, I was saying Jeff, not Steve, I think people call me Steve. I apologize. Don't worry about it, you're the only one, actually. I, I also think that the, you know, the purpose as stated is, is to stop things and slow things and modify things, it's not. Tell us what we don't want as opposed to telling us what we do want, and so to me, there's, you know, an opportunity to take a more first principles approach to it and. Why would we want to slow down? A development that creates fifty more dwelling units, just because it creates fifty more dwelling units. It probably would trigger other things too, so why use, why add that layer of friction? So, you know. One reason to have this be under the planning board's purview is if the MDR were. Placed in the context of the conference of plan, the master plan instead. And we're trying to make sure that major developments that have a big impact on our community are doing it, or. Creating the things we do want. And I mean, it goes without saying, we don't want it to do things we don't want, but this doesn't say anything about the stuff we want to see, it's just about the things we don't want to see. So it's a, you know, it's, and that's just how zoning is written in general, it can have that tone if it needs to, but I'm not seeing the things that I. Think as, as Victor was saying. You know, if you just have a, a threshold that's an absolute threshold in a community that has a diversity of places, you know. A thousand trips per day means something very different on Route Two and on a neighborhood street. This doesn't, this isn't sensitive to that, some streets don't have a traffic problem, they can accommodate plenty of more development. Other streets maybe can't accommodate a ton more development, so therefore, this isn't a very effective way of regulating. Negative impacts, which tend to be more contextual than just a binary, you know, trigger like this.
And just, just to, for people who don't have the zoning ordinance from current zoning ordinance, you're. Uh, mentioning that one thing that would trigger an MDR then and currently is um. All uses that create fifty or more dwelling units, and that's something that wasn't adjusted in two thousand and nineteen.
The first thing on the list is traffic. And I would say the traffic is not the biggest problem we have in this town, it's, there's other things we want more, you know, if we had a traffic problem. That would be a symptom of economic prosperity, probably, I think it's a long time before we're going to have significant traffic problems in most parts of our community, not to say that it's. Not something we should care about, but this is communicating that we, you know, the trigger that we're fighting about is. Traffic counts, not what if a building was somehow, it had a really negative impact on the look and feel of downtown, it made it a much. Less attractive place to be, that, that would have a bigger impact on our economy. Than if we have a little bit more traffic on, on Route Two or on the rotary, so just to, to make sure, either take out things that aren't. Kind of speaking to what's important to us, or at least add things that do speak to what's important to us and, and it could be that the zoning board. Regulates the things that are more about changing the rules and we're more about interpreting the rules, if we're also the. The steward of the comp plan, the master plan, the zoning board is not that, I think. And I mean, staff and others can, can, can help with that as well, but I think as Victor was saying, we. If we're, if we're going to amend this thing, let's make it do what we want it to do, not, you know, fight over little details.
And, and just to what you were just saying, Jeff, the um, master plan is officially a planning board document.
Yeah, and then we talked about that in the past, that's why I was thinking this way.
Yep. And you're also saying to the purpose that uh. It's, it's focused on avoiding negative, you, you would wonder if there's a way to reframe that in a positive way.
I mean, a lot of times in zoning, you know, there already are protections, like we don't want. You know, there, there's already setback rules, there's already things that make sure that, you know, there, there's certain, there's, there's more guardrails than we might remember. Around a lot of types of development already. It, it's, it's the, and, and other things that have a bigger impact, a bigger experiential impact, bigger economic impact, aren't even addressed. So I think this is an opportunity for projects that are of a certain. Import magnitude, you know, how we measure that. And how we measure that is still up for debate, but it still should be called major development review. It shouldn't be called every development on Main Street. But it should be if it's a sizable development and it's on Main Street, then it should be a trigger. And if it were just as big as that, but somewhere else, maybe it isn't a trigger because it isn't in such a sensitive location. And we might not want to slow it down so readily in those other locations. So to me, it's not about amending this line or that line. It's about kind of rethinking, reframing the entire rule.
Would you be willing to put it together? Someone's got to do it. I mean, someone's got to put out a draft before we got for us to work on or review. I'd be glad to work with anyone on on a draft and then throw my, but I mean, we can talk about, if this document we feel that's in front of us is not what we think it should be, then we need to draft a new one.
Derek?
So it seems to me that the board has three different paths that we could take. One would be totally looking at major development review, spending a lot of time and research to kind of like revamp it, rewrite it, refocus it. Another could be, okay, another path could be that we focus on the specific things that were amended in twenty nineteen and decide based on the materials that we got and other evidence, whether those are acceptable to leave as is, or whether we want to recommend that they be changed. And then a third path would be to not take this on as a priority because well, there could be many reasons why it could not be a priority, but those seem like the three paths. And before we get too deep into the weeds, it seems like we might discuss what, which one of those three would be like most advantageous to the board.
Good, good framing. There's also the punt, if that's the same as not prioritize, like wait for some external thing to happen and then come back to it.
That's, yeah, that's the, well, doing nothing at this time. It doesn't mean we can't do anything in the future.
Yeah. And so one thing that, you know, is not as efficient as it could be is for us to work on this and some other body or board works on that. If the master plan isn't being done right now and it's almost, when is it going to be done this year?
Oh, the adjustments to the master plan.
Yeah.
It's getting close to the revised chapters being being ready to be presented to the planning board.
Yeah, okay. Sometimes it's better for there to be an external mandate for us to do this than for us to just take it upon ourselves to do it. So if a new master plan comes out and is ratified by, I know, but we vote on those, but does council adopt the master?
Not officially. Again, it's the planning board who would make the official adoption of it. It's, it's when we had done it, excuse me, in two thousand fourteen, we had presented it to the mayor and to the, you know, council for buy-in, so to speak. But it wasn't that they had the official vote on.
It feels easier for us to be the to take on, you know, officially being the steward of the conference plan, the master plan. Get that done and then have one of the action items in that Plan B to come back and look at this in light of the refreshed master plan. And this is therefore, the master plan set out the vision and the goals for the community. Now we need a mechanism to make sure that new development is consistent with those. Let's then use that rebuild this to do that and not rebuild this before we get to that point. And we might find when when we're presented the draft that it's not that different from previous, the previous master plan and in fundamental ways, if we can move forward. But that would be the sequence. I typically see the comprehensive plan being that big milestone that then leads to the tweaks and the rest of the community that are necessary to kind of realize that for the next decade. That's the punt.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Jeff that I think the, seeing as the planning board has addressed this several times already, I know in our last discussion, we were talking about having more, you know, coming in with more evidence about why we wanted to make the changes and and kind of, you know, doing our homework more. It seems like we might want to focus on other things that don't require as much. I guess like detailed like tweaking at this time. Yeah, I'm not sure, but of course I don't have the institutional knowledge that you do, George, so I'm open to being convinced otherwise.
Yeah, well, as I was saying, it, the initial post two thousand nineteen planning board discussions about it was around the majority of the board feeling those hadn't been good, that they were as I turned at the time and others agreed, it was possibly good politics, but it wasn't good planning. And so we're trying to somehow undo that. And then the, but we hadn't taken initiative to do that and knew to some extent it was something that was, there was some some institutional resistance to, as we've seen when those other two proposals to go from three thousand to two thousand day trips came up, that some people feel they're beholden to, you know, the precedent that was set by that and the arrangement. And other people are were receptive to it, but so, so we hadn't. And then that initial was taken by two entities and, and there was the comment about, well, it's bigger if it came from the planning board. So and so now that we're, we're, you know, we'd agree this to be worth at least exploring. We have that question of do we, I guess, I yeah, I guess a third path, I very much appreciate wanting to be holistic about it and have it be in, you know, in keeping with the the master plan. I also am aware that those processes take a while to integrate and to make a change. And I have a bit of concern that without, or feel a bit of responsibility to, you know, provide some reasonable level of protection to the town of these adverse impacts, this is the MDR is supposed to avoid. And those previous guidelines helped with that. And that would be a quicker, you know, just adjusting those things, making a recommendation to the council to adjust those. So they're, you know, either back to the pre two thousand nineteen standards or like had been proposed, some, you know, some compromise within, in between the amounts. That would provide at least, you know, if the council agreed, quick protection. And and again, to emphasize, there have been no things that fell under the MDR that were denied. It was just that, as Victor was pointing out, it provided for scrutiny. It provides for scrutiny by a high level of scrutiny by the board representing the town and the public. And invited for a higher level of public engagement, involvement. So rather than, you know, site plan review, something came under significant scrutiny. And so so in some ways, I'm thinking maybe we should make a reasoned recommendation to the council to adjust these somewhere, you know, between the previous and the current levels. Partly to protect the, the the town from adverse impacts and partly to correct, from my perspective, a process that wasn't good planning. I, it was a pretty unusual situation and there were a lot of, you know, seen concerns going on at the time. I totally get that. And I wasn't in the position of being on the council vote. But from a planning perspective, it seems like it was not a healthy process. And these were randomly selected, you know, amounts. So it just seems like it's a little bit of a correction that we could do in a pretty short order. And then could, you know, with the revised master plan, give a fresh look generally to that. And as, you know, Victor, you're pointing out, you're even thinking of more than just the MDR, things that would qualify for an MDR. So. So.
Again, just, just to watch what's happening.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know who's watching.
What was that?
I don't know who's watching. Which, which board, which, which committee is watching?
Well, that's what the ordinance determines what we're watching and how we're able to, you know, offer scrutiny and some, some oversight. So that's, that's my thought. It's kind of a little bit of a blend of what you're talking about.
A quick Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah.
But not a complicated.
Right.
It's great a Band-Aid. It's just, there's a couple of obvious, living fruit in your mind that we could go ahead and take care of and otherwise take the long, the long route.
So it has been five years since these changes were made. And did you say that enough, any, have any projects come under the MDR process?
Since then?
Since then?
No.
Did you make that point?
Two, two would have.
Two would have.
With the previous thresholds.
Okay.
Correct. So two recent ones, the Aldi's and the
The Starbucks?
Starbucks, yeah.
Okay.
Recent, the recent one was
Thank you.
That was the most recent MDR. Before that, it was two thousand.
In your, I wasn't.
I wasn't remembering that because I had recused myself from that.
Oh, you didn't? Because you're rid of.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, George, would you also say that the ZBA should no longer be the special permit granting authority and that be switched back to planning board? Or are you more concerned about the trip, the numbers of trip, vehicle trips per day and the square footage?
I would say four things. The vehicle trips per day, that's section B one.
Yeah.
Square footage, which is section B four. To restore section B five, which is talking about expansion, because that was totally eliminated. It's not in there when you look in the current zoning ordinance and to have it go back again to the planning board. I don't have particular, the trips per day, the two thousand has been kind of a sweet spot. And it's also, I can't remember what the source is, but it's something that's, it's an external standard of that as well. So that seems like a pretty straightforward one. The square footage, you know, I would say could be adjusted somewhere between those. I'm not sure exactly what would use as standards. But then restore section five and and change the special permit granting authorities. Those will be, those are my definitions.
The special permit grant be only for the MDR project, not, not, not a complete oversight of the existing ZBA, just for an MDR.
Yeah, because each, each thing, there's a, yeah, a special permit granting authority designated. So like I said, the ADU had been, planning board went to ZBA, has come back to the planning board. So to have this go back again, yeah.
So I would have loved to have laid into the Starbucks site plan. I mean, we had very little control over that. We could tell them what types of plants to plant, make sure they have the right light bulbs and argue about whether or not a driveway is one way or not. And I know that that's, and that's one of the most prominent lots in the entire city. So it's unfortunate that a big multinational corporation was forced to spend a little bit more to make that better because of this rule. That's one of the arguments. But traffic is not the thing we, at least that I care about. It's if you have a giant surface parking lot. So the other project that I wish could have gotten some more attention or abuse was the, not abuse.
I struck that for the record.
Thank you. But then the Town Fair Tire Development at High Street, Silver Street, the fact that there's no trees in that parking lot is, so a trigger should be if you have more than twelve surface parking spaces. Something like that.
Jeff, I think you might be getting more into the
That's the intent. That's what we care.
The comprehensive.
Yeah, I think that what we, what we care about is strip malls, suburban development, commercial, it isn't necessarily in the, what we don't want to do is make it harder to build housing. Because that's important. I mean, everybody that, we should separate the, the uses that can withstand that type of friction from those that can't. It's another way of putting it. Housing is very difficult to develop. Adding more layers of reporting, looking at those, the, the impact reports you have to do, that's going to make it that much more difficult and expensive to develop housing, which we, that's what we need. Do we need another, and it's not our job to decide if we need another coffee shop or if we need another tire store. That's not the point. But when a giant surface parking lot is changing ownership, it'd be great to have an opportunity to make that serve the community better again. There's jobs associated with that. There's tax, those sorts of things, but it's, we should be able to kind of work on that site a bit more.
Are you suggesting that would come under the MDR?
If, surface parking lots are a blight to our community, especially on these major streets. At least when they're right in the front door, it's the first thing you see. So that's an adverse effect that's not covered by this. You could be a small use that, you could be an abandoned property that are, I guess, I'm just trying to think of a use that doesn't have much traffic, but can have a really ugly site that has a very negative impact on our communities. That should be triggering here too. So a giant surface parking lot, even if there's not a whole lot of traffic, you know, used a car lot, for example. It might not be that much traffic in a of, you know, a dealership lot, but it's a major, it's not appropriate for a downtown environment. So there should, that, you should be under more scrutiny if you're going to propose something like that, the giant surface parking.
Can I say one more thing? Because it's, it's hard to sit here having a few years of background.
Yes.
So let me just say a couple of things. The medical plan is aspirational. It's always been aspirational and it always gets filed away and no one looks at it again. The major development review is focused more on what actually comes through our front door from development is usually growth and greenfield has been developer group. We, we don't, we don't have the internal developers with the money to use our own land. So people from, like from Connecticut, people from New York State, they come here and they develop, they make proposals. And the MDR has been designed to try to, as you say, mitigate, not to stop, but to mitigate negative impacts. I don't really care about leaking things up with the master plan because it's not going to happen. I've never seen it happen in thirty years of watching development in this town. But there are other, there are things that have happened. For example, major, major use of marijuana, land for marijuana development, major use of land for solar and battery storage. And we, I'm talking about big parcels. If four thousand, three hundred solar panels going up in the Kepel property on, on Berniston Road. These are things that should, these are, these are things that have major development impacts and are not done through the MDR. So I think the idea that was expressed about, you know, if it's along Main Street, if it's along Federal Street, it's an, it's an MDR. If it's a major marijuana, it's an MDR. And that can be defined as being whether a tier three marijuana or up or dealing with these energy systems, anything bigger than twenty five megawatts, whatever. There are ways of crafting the catching in a net major developments that should be, should be analyzed. But I also say to you, there's another, there's another way to do this as well, which is to beef up what I call the life plan review, which you call the site plan review. But the, the site plan review is another way that you can, you could have dealt with things like, wasn't reasonable to create the kind of traffic that I think is going to happen with, with Starbucks or with Aldi's in, which is a very bizarre location for a grocery store, the number of, of car trips. Those are, those were not triggered by the MDR, but they could have been, they could have been looked at as part of the site plan review, if that's all you've got. Rather than asking what's the increase in the average day to car trips, which tells you nothing. You need to know the total volume of, of traffic on here. You need to know about the level of service, what the traffic engineers call level of service. And honestly, if you, if you look at that document that I just referenced, the impact statements, it's got stuff in there that you probably would say, oh, my gosh. We didn't realize that if a project goes through an MDR, it cannot degrade any intersection below a level C. There's stuff, stuff that makes sense to what you were saying, I think what Jeff was saying earlier about, you know, if you add a lot of traffic onto the end of the French King Highway, it's very different. you know, if you add a lot of traffic onto the end of the French King Highway, it's very different than adding a lot of traffic on, on Route ninety-one. Uh, so that's why we have these level of service definitions. And so I urge you to look at that document because the triggers there are very different than the triggers you see in your ordinance. Uh, it's very good. It's not, it's not about, uh, um, you know, average daily, daily car trips at all. It's about level of service, which is a different measurement. So I think there's some good things, really interesting things you could do. And I think the public, some people in the public would come into uh, the process of a hearing on, on, on these kinds of things to make their comments about what hasn't, what hasn't been working and what has worked. But, um, I would encourage you to make some of the changes that, that George was talking about, but also to broaden it. I liked what he said the, the last couple of meetings ago about, you know, if it's a, if it's a major development on a major street, it's, I don't care what the traffic is. It's, it's a, it's a significant, do anything on Federal Street. Anything on, on, uh, you know, high, uh, on Main Street and other things. But, and then these other categories, marijuana and, and energy. Major, having a major impact on our town, taking away many, many, many acres of cultural land. Is that really what we want? So I, I'm sorry, but I, th- this is, um, this is stuff that, um, I know there are other people out there that have strong feelings like I do about the MDR. And if you look at the, the other document I referenced, I think it'll be, you know, very, uh, productive for you to come up with other ideas. And I would encourage you, look at, look at your, look at your site plan review. Make that part of, beef that up too. It's, it's really a very life plan to me. Look how quickly Aldi's was, Aldi's was out of here in an hour. And that, that store is going to have a major impact on a number of other merchants already in business. One hour and they're through. So, you know, the, the MDR, the MDR for, for Walmart was six months. Remember? I think you were sitting in on those meetings when, when Roxanne was the planning board chairman, that the, the the, the hearings, the hearings for MDR for the Walmart in two thousand and six lasted about six months. And yet, and yet was very, in some ways, very superficial, but that's because the public isn't able to ask. Another thing is that have the public be able to ask the special permit granting authority, ask questions to the chair to be, to be directed to the, uh, developer. Which, because some of us are sitting out in the audience, like, oh, my God. The developer said he just can't handle small one. That's absolutely not true. So I think there's a, you might get a lot of suggestions by having a public hearing on the MDR in addition, because I, I think you're saying a number of good things tonight that should be changed.
Thank you. And I'll mention that, um, document, um, that Al was referencing. I apologize to the board for being remiss because those are some of those veteran member and as having been entrusted as chair, it should have been something that I should have, uh, noted. So again, that's the rules and regulations for impact statements regarding the MDR. Uh, that was last revised in two thousand and six. So I'll make sure Eric, everybody has a copy of that in your materials already.
I think I found it too. I was looking at it.
Right. Um, and, uh, do want to find a way to wrap this up as far as getting some consensus on the board about how to proceed about the MDR. I'll, I'll throw out too that, um, you know, as far as the site plan review, it's, you know, interesting, the idea of, um, you know, uh, seeing if there's any way to, um, strengthen that again, in keeping with, uh, Victor's concern. And also, uh, as I had noted, and as David Singer brought up, the question of notice of the public, when you're going to have something that fall is by right, and it's a site plan review. Because unless people are scrutinized, the ag eight, you know, notices or something like that are checking regularly, it'd be easy not to know about that. So even if you're in a butter, so.
Like, there's no reason not to be as transparent as possible. Because if that, if that erodes trust, it doesn't make any difference to the process. It only, it doesn't, I don't see the, the negative cost of posting more things. It probably is just, it's, like you said, this one person who's responsible and there's a lot of things to post and to hopefully, it's just an administrative uh, issue that can be solved. But I don't think it's an attempt to hide the process from anybody.
So, so partly when I think about the, um, uh, the MDR, uh, as well, and any kind of making a substantive change to, uh, um, you know, proposing a substantive change to the zoning ordinance, there's the issue of the communication uh, and, and informing the council who makes the decision. That's why I think this has been so helpful to have Alice involved at this hearing, you know, this for the public and for, uh, for the members of the, uh, EDC. And also to be there for, um, uh, for the full council to ask any questions.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm thinking, does it make sense to try to go with these Band-Aids, as you said, or kind of a version to something that seems less egregious for some of us than the changes that were made in two thousand and nineteen? And then be further exploring other, you know, um, revisions or improvements to the zoning ordinance, is that?
I don't have a problem with the, the suggestions that you made.
Don't have a problem.
Don't have the other Band-Aids. I, I think maybe we could toss a couple more in there, but if that's, I guess, maybe one, one thing you're saying is there's a because there's a history with these very specific items and we're toggling them back and forth, that's not as substantive as making something entirely new.
I think there's been a lot of scope creep in this discussion. Like, my understanding coming into this is that we would look at these specific uh, changes from two thousand and nineteen and whether they're evidence-based or not. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure if there's a consensus on whether.
Okay. So I guess it seems like it might be a political lift to make these changes, propose these changes now. You know, undoing some changes that were made in two thousand and nineteen and then coming back at some point in the future, like maybe in a year or something, and make totally rethinking the MDR process or the MDR ordinance. So I'm not sure. I'm just concerned about duplicating our efforts. Um.
Well, I, I also, yeah, the special permit process was why we could only do a couple. I mean, maybe to rethink this means to, that needs to be re, I mean, the nature of our authority needs to be evaluated. That's even a bigger scope creep, but you know, all the more reason not to get carried away right now.
Right.
Uh, thinking about this. So I think I'm back with you then, yeah. So, so let's focus on the few things that we feel are kind of achievable in, in this, this conversation now. I think it's helpful to, to talk a bit about the bigger picture. And repeatedly.
Yeah.
I think the ideas are narrated and we will find our moment to do those bigger things.
Okay.
But we, I appreciate the idea of, all right, now let's come back to the thing that we can actually do right now.
And, and just to respond, the scope had been more broadly a discussion of the MDR, because that had been.
Yeah.
That had been what had, uh, led me to, uh, as I say, a prior iteration of the board had talked about it, who had experienced that. And then I was bringing it to the newer, you know, established board as a framework for, yeah. So that was my proposal, so to speak, to revisit those, where we're opening up to a broader, was there other discussion? And now I'm kind of re-proposing, um, you know, focusing on those things as the Band-Aids we're talking about. And then, um, so so it sounds like Jeff's agreeable with that. Didn't know if you, if that is okay with you to come back to that and, and, you know, get into a particular, you know, numbers or particular, uh, motion at some point to initiate something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I will say, like, based on the materials that we received and the comparison chart, it does seem like Greenfield's, uh, threshold for MDR is quite high compared to comparable towns and cities. Um, and it also seems like there's a wide range of ways that towns approach this, um, towns and cities, I should say. So. Yeah, I'm both a man of all here. I'm like both open to, um, lowering the threshold to something that seems more comparable to other cities and towns and also like thinking it through in a more comprehensive way. Yeah, I'm just not sure that it, right now is the time to have the discussion about the comprehensive changes.
Yeah. Moving on.
And Victor, how does that sound to you to focus in the near future on the, 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 those specific, coming back to those specific, um, changes that were made in two thousand and nineteen?
I think if you tackle the problem, I'm, I'm, I'm the, I'm the kind of person who likes to get the problem solved. So, you know, I will work with the board. If the board's feeling is to just essentially, you know, turn this back over and say, put these all back into place for the quick Band-Aid. I'm fine with that, but I really think we need to redo the plan and come up with some significant triggers and things that are meaningful and really just are meaningful. I don't, I don't think these are really meaningful in, in the sense of. The, the short answer to your question is I'm fine with just putting your Band-Aid back on, but I don't think we should wait years to, to tackle this plan. I don't know what we're doing that's so important that we can't tackle this. Maybe I'm missing something. But, um, I think this is, I think this is an important tool for the board to have in place to do our job.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So that sounds like we're kind of got a general consensus about that, how to proceed in the near future.
So it sounds like we're gonna tackle this twice. Once now with the Band-Aid and then sometime in the future again.
It sounds like there's interest in doing a, a deeper thought. Yeah, would be more comprehensive and more.
Yeah.
Uh, time consuming. Yeah.
Is there precedent for the planning board? Just constantly meddling with the, the zoning? Is that how it's always been?
Well, there have been times when things have been proposed and then a further change is proposed and not a huge amount of time passing.
Yeah.
You want to be thoughtful about it. But I mean, I think it seems like we, there's kind of a rationale here for this two-part process. So.
I mean, just looking through the, like, the zoning ordinance that I have, um, it seems like there are changes fairly frequently, but.
Oh, I see.
The MDR in particular, it looks like is maybe rewritten in two thousand and six and then these small changes in two thousand and nineteen. So, I mean, two thousand and six was almost twenty years ago. Um, just putting that out there. I don't know if there's a precedent is what I'm saying.
Well, that's good.
But also maybe it's time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for example, the ADU, I think that was, if you look at that, I think there were changes made.
Yeah.
Over the course of several years.
Yeah.
A few changes made. So it, it sometimes does happen that way. Okay. Can we move on from this discussion that feels?
So what is the outcome? Are we, is there motions involved? Or are we just kind of studying that?
No, just discussions. We don't need a motion. But I'm, I'm just trying to get to make sure representing my, my senses. I know we have stuff going on in October as far as other, you know, housing related issues, but that, uh, that discussion, but, uh, that we would, um, in the near future, because we also have the as part of our, uh, agreed upon, uh, priorities was about the, um, uh, the adjustments to the master plan, the two chapters of the master plan. So finding out what the timing of that is, when that can come to the board. Uh, I just work with Eric to figure out what's the reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, uh, priority, prioritization for the next few months.
I think it would be politically meaningful to stick, my last comment on this, I guess, is not just switch some things back to the way they were. But do like you, one or two symbolic things, like I would strike all uses that create fifty or more dwelling units. Why is that a trigger? That shouldn't be a trigger. And it doesn't seem like, I don't know if you'd get a whole lot of blowback on that one either. It.
Because that way it's, it's, it's showing that we're not just saying, oh.
It's not just, I'll get it back.
Right, right, right.
Here, there, but there's something that's reflective of the current conversation too. And then we, we have to, or acknowledging we can't fix everything, but there's some low hanging fruit, some of which have been hanging there for a while and some of which are kind of top now.
Okay.
The hot topic.
So we can say our next discussion would be making specific recommendations that we'd come up to.
Yeah.
You know, decide upon amongst ourselves and then initiate.
But it'll be a, a short list of things. So we'll not pull about that and not blow in the whole thing out. Yeah. Good, Eric.
That's fair. Um, did anyone else, was anyone else curious about the, um, vehicle trips per day threshold and where that uh, recommendation of changing it back to two thousand came from?
Uh, how do you mean?
Um.
Why someone came up with that number?
Yeah, because E- Eric had been, I wish Eric were here. Maybe we could have this discussion when Eric's here, but, uh, Eric has mentioned that it comes from, I thought, MassDOT.
Yeah.
Um, so I like lifted up from MassDOT Transportation.
That's where it came from.
Oh, it came from.
It is a petition, ten people.
It came from a.
No, but you're wondering, you're wondering what a reference to the.
Yeah, there is some professional standard, right?
State, state people level.
Sorry?
Deep on the, the Environmental Policy Act, the State Environmental Policy Act, Street House, that's where it came from.
Okay, NEPA.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the equivalent of referencing the Audubon Society for Open Space Rule. It's a different market. It, it has some basis in science.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah.
And I think generally, as you're saying.
Right.
It, it helps to have reference points.
Right.
To these things.
Yeah.
Didn't exist in two thousand and nineteen when this was changed, other than go up. And, uh, just as you were saying, that you're, uh, commenting earlier about materials we've got from other towns or cities, you're using as reference points to, to bolster the rationale for the argument for making the changes. So.
Right.
When we have this discussion, we can bring those rationales to bear. That, that would be good.
I think it'd be helpful to reference something like that in each proposed change decided.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So that it, it has more credibility than just, well, we like this number better because it's smaller or larger.
Mm hmm. Exactly. Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
We move on. Okay. Board of Staff reports, um, I did after we, at the last, uh, meeting, um, had raised the issue of, uh, um, not having had someone on the, uh, Community Preservation Committee representing the planning board for a bit, uh, because Amy hadn't been going, we had learned that night. And, uh, Peter had volunteered to be appointed if Amy wasn't going to be able to do it. And I did contact Amy. And, um, she was saying that she couldn't continue doing that. So Peter did very quickly, the next week, he, he sat in on that. And he was, because he was appointed, he didn't need further approval by the, um, you know, by the swearing by the clerk, something like that. Um, and, uh, just to mention about Amy too, at that time, she indicated it's possible she'll need to resign from the planning board altogether. Um, it almost seems like de facto that's happening, but I, I hadn't heard from her further about that. And I emailed her today. I should, a little more advanced notice, just to clarify, but, um, didn't hear back. Um, and so, you know, um, if she is going to do that, I'll just make sure it happens as a, an official resignation to the mayor. So the slot is officially open.
Yeah.
Because we had that situation once before, where it was just kind of lingering and the person wasn't responding and it kind of left, you know, left it. So it wasn't filled, the board, uh, seat wasn't fillable. Um, another announcement I wanted to make is I, I just heard the other day from Eric that he heard from the mayor that they're trying to use this space for more meetings, I guess. It's ironic, I guess. Rather than the John's on, I guess, um, or other spaces. So, um, they have requested that we adjust our start time by half hour. Uh, so that we start at six thirty rather than six, um, so that the historic commission can meet, uh, just before us. And, uh, it wasn't, it didn't, it wasn't in the form of a request. It was, it was kind of letting us know that would necessary.
Starting.
They're about, uh, starting, yes, at the October meeting.
Well, it's easier for me. We get here exactly six o'clock. This was clear, I ran it six oh one.
So we're not having a mass protest. I hope that's okay for you too, Victor.
Absolutely.
Great. So that brings us to, unless there are other, oh, please. Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I'm just gonna um, make announcements about training, which seems to be my thing now. Um, so the COG, Allison is, um, I'm not sure if she personally is planning a workshop, but she, um, said in an email, uh, follow-up after I went to the watershed planning workshop that they're going to offer a workshop on site plan review. Um, the original idea was that it would be in September, so it may be before the next meeting. Um, there's like three weeks left in September, so it could. there's like three weeks left in September, so it could be scheduled and happen, um but it could be later than that. Um so I'll let you all know if I hear anything else about that.
That would be great.
Yeah. Uh and then there's the Citizen Planning Planner Training Collaborative, um which offers workshops for planning board members and Z B A members. They're gonna begin a series of webinars in October. Um, and if you're interested in learning about those, you can sign up to get notified on the website of the Citizen Planning Planner Training Collaborative. Um, and then there is one other thing. It's um more of a, like an interesting idea. I don't know if any planning board members would consider being participating. There is something called a week without driving. Uh and it's just to get uh an idea of what the community is like for people who cannot drive. For, you know, there's many different reasons that might be the case. Um and this year, it's going to happen Monday, September thirtieth through Sunday, October sixth. So if you wanna get more information, just let me know. I haven't decided if I'm going to participate or not, but I'm considering it. So just thought I would put that out there.
Cool. Is there an organization behind that?
Yes, uh, and I don't remember what it's called.
If we search that, we'll probably find it.
Yeah, you will find it. It has a website. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Wish I was
It's possible for me to
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Um, great. No, thank you for being the the uh training guru for the group.
Yeah, no.
And uh so the next meeting would be the first Thursday, which
There, I just, I just looked it up.
Third, okay.
Uh, yeah, October, Thursday, October third at six thirty.
Yes, six thirty. Yes, thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second.
All planning members in favor of adjourned? Wait a minute.
Eight thirty two or seven thirty two?
Yeah.
Okay, seven thirty two.
Eight thirty two.
Eight thirty two, okay.
What, Bermuda, one hour?
Thank you.
I'm an hour. Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much for doing, taking this on and for being here. It's great.
Yeah, true dedication.
Yeah.
Well, it's important. Thanks.
Yeah. Enjoy the rest of your time there.
Thank you.
Take care. Night.